I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberally and just as a whole.
Rule call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks.
President.
Commissioner Ike Meyer.
President.
Commissioner Dogger.
Here.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
All right. I was waiting to split the vote, but apparently I didn't get to.
I just saw Tom's lead today.
Yeah. It was gonna be a hard decision here in present.
Almost said yes.
Did I skip?
Yeah, you skipped me, that's okay. I know, I know, but we had a split council there, so anyway. All right, so I need approval, minutes held on November twenty ninth of two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, rule call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger.
Here, yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
You're here twice.
You are. All right, visitors. Jay Roy D., welcome. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, what I wanna talk about is the, uh, the bricks on Cherry Street. We started a project a couple of years ago, and we said, let's preserve this street, let's fix the worst spots, and let's try to do it with private money because you all have a tight budget, but you have a backhoe and you've got some things you can provide. This is the, uh, this is the brick. You can't get these anymore, but this is a Cherry Street brick. You had a big pile of them when we started, and we used a big part of those, and so the problem is, we're out of the bricks. So, the best that I could find, these are, um, street outdoor bricks. Uh, they, I think these came from Kilabrew Brick in Edwell. They have little, uh, lugs or notches on the side, which keep them from bidding too close together, so that there's room for the sand and mortar to fit in there and get some space right, and they go quicker. And you don't have to do that, but they claim that if you don't, and they get laid too close together and the traffic's going over them, they may break. So, that's what we came up with. These are, I think, like, cut bricks rather than pressed, so they hold up our streets. So, they're designed for that. And, so we fixed three spots in our project, and we fixed a spot over there on Cherry Street, near Ninth Street, so just back from that. And the way we did that, we used city labor to, and backhoe, to excavate the brick and the concrete below it, and just get back to solid brick, so we had something to tie into. And then, after that, um, we paid with our, with our, uh, private funds and money that I tried to raise, we paid for the concrete. The concrete came from Albion, and the city workers roughed it in. It was just a rough job, thinking that then you use sand to get it level. It takes longer to do that, and, um, we used Tim Weiser, so we paid Tim Weiser, um, construction, landscaping, to do the brick laying, and most of the bricks were already clean. They didn't have to be real clean, we learned, and they still lay in there pretty good. But on the first spot, I have to admit, he didn't do a real good job. It was hard to get that right. The second spot, down Cherry Street, he got better. The third spot, he got even better. But we're about out of bricks, so I thought, let's do an intersection. The worst intersection is the intersection, but I can tell, Seventh and Cherry, and there is a diagram of what Tim wants to do there. Tim said, let's do it this way. Let's see if the city will excavate. This is the amount of, as you, as you, your diagram says, there's thirteen hundred and forty-five square feet to get back to good on all four sides. And he said if we could get the city to excavate and haul the bricks off, and we'll have bricks for other spots later, and then let's let, um, Collier Concrete, which is Sheldon.
Yep.
Let him get it to perfect grade. So, of course, his specs, I think, were, um, using four thousand pounds, six bag mix, fiber reinforcement, control joints, and the grade, grade is plus or minus one-half inch. And I, I suppose it has to slope four ways slightly, but he says if Collier does that, the concrete or the cement will be so close to perfect
Right.
that he can lay the bricks pretty quickly. So, I got an estimate, um, of what I think this will cost. And you can see on the, uh, Dean Collier Construction, they're part of the work getting that concrete ready to lay, finishing it within one-half inch plus or minus is sixty-four hundred and sixty dollars. Weiser Landscaping then would lay the bricks, and the bricks, the way we calculate, with that amount of square feet, there is three and three-quarter, oh, the bricks are three and three-quarter inch, I think, or four inches, but four and a half bricks per square feet, so six thousand bricks, or it's just over twelve pallets of bricks. It's a lot of bricks by the time you cover that area, but again, we're gonna have more bricks for the next spot. And he, he estimated that he could do that for six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then, the, uh, brick cost, and I'm not solid on that, but it should be, it should be that or less. But we're gonna try to get it less, we're gonna try to appeal to, um, that it is a civic project, and that it is historic, and that it gets, um, it gets a lot of attention. So, with that amount of bricks, so six thousand bricks, ten thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. But, you know, originally, we thought this was probably gonna be thirty-five thousand dollars to do a whole intersection, and I think we can do it for twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. I made a donation, or we made a contribution already, and to a fund, so the fund goes to, uh, it goes through the Area Economic Alliance at Kemper's called Cherry Street Brick Project, so there's like sixty-eight hundred dollars earned now. I'll raise the rest of the money. And that's part of the reason for coming here and presenting. I need your approval to say, yes, this sounds like a good project. Go ahead and do it, Jay, or proceed, try to do that, and yes, the city workers, um, will coordinate with Tim Weiser and will excavate and block off the street. He thinks he can still do it. He didn't wanna get started before this because he's been real busy, but he said he thinks that whether still be suitable where we could get the intersection done, but like I say, first, your approval, or that this sounds like a good idea. Secondly, um, just to try and get some attention, so that maybe we can get some other contributions, but I'll make the commitment that I'll get the funds to pay for that, so, you know, it's not gonna cost you funds. He's gonna have some kind of a design. I think at this point, the way those bricks are laid out, they go four different directions. It makes a kind of a nice design. Um, this is probably about the color, and it blends in pretty good. But even if it doesn't, it's gonna give it a little contrast, and we'll say, there's a nice intersection. If it works well, then we can tackle the next intersection. And I think, I'm hoping in between spots, then, or intersections, we can get back and do some of those bad spots. You know, I think there is a whole number of reasons why we have those spots. People got to trench across those years ago, or they got to dig across it, and the foundation wasn't as solid, or it got more solid, and that caused a problem, but for whatever reason, it didn't get tied into the bricks, and that's what Dave Easter stressed, is that you gotta get back till you get good bricks, and then kinda tie it in the best you can.
Right.
So, anyway, that's what I'd like to proceed with. I think that, and I wanna push really hard on that project because I think it's one of our last streets. It was pretty neat to see Fifth Street when you were working on that. I thought, oh, there's those bricks. And they still look great, but, you know, they were scratched up, and you had to get something done quick, and you got it done. But Cherry Street, if we could do that, I think it's probably the most economic thing we could do.
Right.
I wish I could find those bricks, but they don't make them anymore. So, that's, um, you know, what I've learned so far.
I think it's a wonderful idea, Jay.
Yeah, I think it's awesome.
Did Tim have a timeframe? How long, weather depending, it'd take him to get it all done, or?
Um, he thought maybe five days, I think. I mean, I think he thought all the time, it gets excavated, then, um, Sheldon's ready to pour, and it gets poured, and I think, I still think probably, and, and Dave probably knows more than that, um, than I do, but I think two or three days probably before you can really drive on that concrete. But again, four thousand pounds, six bag mix, six inches thick. I think, Tim thinks that they'll lay in there quicker because he doesn't, he messed a lot with that sand and trying to get the sand level, and it still wasn't
Yeah.
the best. And again, it was rough concrete. We thought the sand would make a difference, but it's hard to do that. If the concrete's perfect, they just lay right on there. He still goes in between. He thinks it needs the Portland cement and sand between the bricks to firm them up.
Yep.
I've heard mixed feelings, but I think Tim's gonna stand behind it, so.
Well, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a great idea.
Me too.
What do you think about two-day tear out? Three-day?
Jay, there should, should be a six inches of concrete underneath those bricks now.
Uh-huh.
Did you find that when you?
I don't, I think some of it got so tore up, they couldn't, I mean, it was so busted up and stuff, they couldn't really tell, and, and, and Dave didn't really say.
The only reason I say that, when you, as you, if you could, I don't know whether it's more economical to just say, to heck with the old concrete and, you know, take, if you took the bricks off, and then you find the concrete's no good underneath it, then you're back into tearing the concrete out, so it's kind of a two-step operation instead of one. But the original plan for those was to have, uh, six inches of, of, uh, concrete poured, and then they put like about a four-inch sand cushion, and then they placed the, the pavers that we see today that, you know.
I thought we were talking about removing the concrete anyway.
Well, I think, I'm, I'm afraid it's all busted up below it.
Yeah, and it very well could be.
Yeah.
It looks like it on that, and it's so pieced, like, some of it's just concrete now, where there's no bricks anymore, and they just poured concrete, and others, the, the bricks sagged. Dave was putting blacktop in there just to take some of the pressure off, 'cause it was, it was really a bad spot.
If the bricks aren't even, then that tells me that the base is just.
Yeah.
So, I think they assume worst case, and that the concrete.
But I guess something, be prepared to find when you start excavating, when you find a.
Yeah, and Dave early on said, if it's busted, we gotta get back till we get to good concrete someplace to tie into. We're not gonna have good. But yeah, okay. And as far as whether there's some sand goes on that, I'm not sure if sand goes on it or not, but I think Tim was acting like, well, and then they're gonna have to figure out, because the bricks are only, um, three and three, three-quarter inches thick instead of like, uh, five inches thick or whatever that is, so some, the concrete's gonna have to be, be a little, a little higher level or something, but they're gonna make it work, you know?
Yep.
Sheldon's good, and I think Tim will figure it out too.
Tim, Dave, and Sheldon will get it figured out.
So, do you have, uh, do you need a, a motion, or, or do you just say, why don't you proceed and try to coordinate with us? 'Cause I'll, I'll try to push the project, and then I hope I get some donations, but if not, I'll come up.
Yeah, I'll do a motion.
I'll make the motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Rule call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks for allowing us, and then hopefully we can make a joint at this, and then, and then we've got something to say, let's do another one.
Yep.
Thanks, Jay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, reports and communications. I wanna thank everybody who come in this evening, our viewers out there also. Uh, would ask to, like to ask for prayers for the tornado victims, um, throughout Southern Illinois, Kentucky, and areas at Arkansas, wherever else there were tornadoes this past Friday night and Saturday, so ask for a moment of silence in memory of the victims of the tornado. Had a lot of people reaching out. Um, I've spoke to the mayor of Edwardsville, Art Rizki, and, um, was with him actually on Friday when he got the call about what happened in Edwardsville. Uh, we were at meetings and conferences up in Chicago. Um, they had a lot of industrial, um, storm damage, um, loss of life. Um, catastrophic as it was, um, the towns of Mayfield and Dawson Springs and Bowling Green, Kentucky also were hit very hard. Um, reached out to the Kentucky, um, Department of, um, Defense, spoke with them also. Um, everything's being coordinated through, um, Henderson, Sheriff's Department, Police Department down in Henderson, Kentucky. Um, we're gonna start a, uh, food drive. Um, we'll get in a semi, wanna try to fill it up this week, get it sent out on Friday down there to them. I believe it's going to go to Dawson Springs, is what they're telling me. They would like for us to send it to. Um, so it will be there at the fire department tomorrow in the back. You can take your donations anytime between now and late Thursday or until the truck is filled up, uh, this week. I do wanna have a, an extra special thank you to Denny George and David Ivors from Ivors Farms up in Saint Francisville. They have graciously donated the truck, the trailer, and the driver, and the diesel to deliver this down to Dawson Springs, Kentucky. Uh, when I spoke with, um, Jared, um, what was his name? Anyways, um, Command Central down in Henderson today. Oh, Jared, Jared Schuhorn. Uh, he's very thankful, um, that people of Mount Carmel and Wollbach County want to send stuff down there to them. Uh, so if you have something you can donate, uh, please, uh, bring it to the firehouse. If you have, you don't have anything you wanna donate, but you wanna donate money, uh, you can bring it up here to City Hall, and we will get it to the appropriate people. Um, or what they're asking for us to do is to purchase things and put on the truck to send down there. Right now, they're in need of, you know, tarps, water, cleaning stuff, heavy-duty, um, gloves, uh, stuff to, you know, disinfect things. They, uh, they asked today that we concentrate on the usable items, not clothes. So, I know a lot of people wanna do clothes, which is wonderful. Uh, they said they have that, uh, going through other towns, but for Mount Carmel, they wanted us to concentrate on food, water, you know, stuff like that, anything household usable. So, um, we appreciate all the support there. Um, with this, it makes you very, um, you know, thankful nothing happened here with the storms that we did get into Wollbach County. Uh, we're speaking with Chief McWilliams and Chief, Chief Speth. I need his mask. Um, you're never prepared for something that happened Friday night, no matter how well-organized you are or your plans. So, was talking with both of them. Uh, they'll be working with the council, uh, Mr. Turner, and, uh, we will try to put a disaster plan together, so if anything would happen here in Mount Carmel, at least we do have an updated plan in place to, uh, you know, be somewhat prepared. You just never know what you're going to get in that type of, uh, you know, scenario. Who would've thought, in the middle of December, you're getting tornadoes in Southern Illinois, even though we've had them in January in Allendale? But glad, uh, everybody here is safe and praying for the families that have lost, um, loved ones and their homes down in Kentucky, so. Um, the, uh, the parade uptown was wonderful, uptown Mount Carmel. My hats off to them. They did a wonderful job. Man, there was a lot of people uptown that Friday night, uh, a lot of happy kids, so it was great to see all that, and, uh, I know they appreciate everybody's support on, um, both of those. The parade was really long. Um, I got to throw candy at Commissioner Dogger, um, mainly because he asked me to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but anyway, um, so that is my report for today. I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and we will see you before the new year. Commissioner Meeks.
First, I wanna say hats off to the mayor for wearing that jacket again in the parade. I was afraid his battery pack was gonna run down before he got to the end, but it stayed lit all the way through.
It did. It's the gift that keeps giving.
The street department's been really busy. I'm not gonna go through all the details, but, uh, sidewalk on Oak Street, I don't know if y'all been down that way, but it's looking really good. They're getting, working their way down towards Highway One. Uh, we continue replacing sidewalks in various parts of the city. Mike and Bumble just finished up on Cherry. Was that what, fifth?
Eight hundred block.
Eight hundred block of Cherry. It was really bad, and, uh, we're getting that taken care of. Poured concrete pad at the city park for our new Gaga Ball. Uh, it looks like it's gonna be a lot of fun for the kids. Uh, took a couple of trees out, one on Fourth Street and two on Second Street. We finally got our bucket truck back in service, which was, made us able to take the two trees out that we did. Uh, the bag truck is out of service, but, uh, negotiating with the sewer department, and Mr. Gidcombe, we made a deal, and we got a truck, and they got a dumpster to hook on to their skid steer, so we're utilizing that dump truck as the bag truck, and, uh, street department assisted the water department with the leak at the senior citizens. And that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Meeks. Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, past two weeks, we had receipts in the general fund of, uh, just over a hundred and fifty thousand, expenditures of two thirty-three, six fifty-two, leaving us at a just over one and a half million dollars in the general fund. Um, majority of that is, was state income tax, which is still holding strong. Um, then we had some replacement tax, which is now over budget for the year, and liquor license renewals were in there, so coming up, I'll get the next council, but, uh, uh, we are at, we generated sixty-eight percent of our budgeted revenue for the year, and we're, if my math's right, we're about sixty-three percent through our fiscal year, so we're a little ahead of schedule on revenue.
Awesome.
Which is partially due to, uh, a few items that have been a little better than we expected, and then some sale of that miscellaneous equipment that we worked on, made a little dent there too that was just laying around, so. Uh, all in all, we're moving, we're still moving in the right direction, so, end of my report.
Mayor, there's something I forgot to mention.
Yeah.
Our street sweeper is how old, Michael?
It's, uh, two thousand and three, I believe.
So, we have an eight, we have an eighteen.
Two thousand and three, two thousand and six model.
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Oh, sad, I thought it was older than that.
Yeah, we bought a brand-new nineteen ninety-seven.
And this thing is nickel and diamond. Well, actually, a hundred dollar and two hundred dollars to death.
Now, my question is, is can we use the leaf truck for the, the street sweeper?
No.
Just for the suction tube?
You can, but it doesn't do exactly what the leaf tra, or the, uh, street sweeper does.
And we're not sure what we'd end up picking up with that, with the vacuum truck. But anyway, that's something we're gonna have to look at, guys. I, I think they asked what it'd be worth on a trade-in. It's worth three thousand dollars, so that tells me that it's not worth a whole lot of anything. Uh, we've.
That's scrap.
Probably scrap it from.
Yeah, that's scrap, that's right. Turned into sinkers. But it's, uh, something we're gonna have to look at, so. I'm not sure how we go about doing it, but, uh, we're gonna have to look into investing in a new street sweeper. That's, that's all I had to say, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Dallas, question. Can we bill out more to motor fuel tax to afford a new sweeper?
Right now, you're billing out about fifteen thousand dollars a year toward us for a street sweeper.
Okay. That's what we're billing out right now? So.
I mean, we could, I said, the equipment rental is available.
Right.
But I don't know that we can, you have to, you have to justify it.
Right, exactly, by use.
And I think that we, you know, I think that we are probably getting close to the.
The max.
There's not a big pile of money out there for that.
Oh, right. Not a big pile for something that costs a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's gonna take a big pile, that's the problem.
And, you know, and there may be such a thing, here again, I don't know, but, but with Ryan and you and Mick and, and Tom and Mike back here, whatever, it may be such a thing that it might be better, you know, we could be better off with leasing one rather than
Right.
purchase one, and.
Yep.
But you guys are better at the money, and, but I'll, I'll certainly work with you on that.
Okay, I didn't know for sure if there was any, anything left or not. I didn't know exactly what we were billing, but fifteen thousand, um. Well, I mean, if you look at it, that you're gonna get twenty to twenty-five years out of one, and you're billing fifteen thousand, you can set your payments up that way or your lease, so, all right, something we can look towards. I wasn't for sure what we were billing out for street sweeping on the equipment and man-hours, so.
The advantage of that is that obviously, you know, like Tom says, that you get at some point in time, and you don't feel like maybe you can have a, a large expenditure for a new one, but at the same time, when it starts to cost a new, you know, three, four, four hundred, fifteen hundred dollars, maybe you can upkeep, then that's.
Well, I think we got sticker shocked on a used street sweeper at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, one that was fifteen years old. Little bit different setup.
Right.
Uh, but, um, and it has more versatility, but, man, still, low hours, but still amazing how much street sweepers are, so. All right, well, that's something we can look into.
Okay, make it, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas. All right, Mr. Dogger.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Keith collected at the water department, he collected the, uh, bacteriological and the radiological samples for the monthly testing for the EPA. Uh, battery at the Oak Street station went bad, and that has been replaced. Um, and dependent on the weather, uh, Keith will be, uh, draining and cleaning the filters, the outside filters here in the next couple of weeks, but it's all gonna depend on the weather. Uh, maintenance department, uh, standard water leak's fixed, uh, cleaned up area around the new sidewalks, which by the way, looked great. Um, delivered a new hydrant to Oak and Willow Swamp, and then, uh, they met with MCPU on multiple occasions about water service crossing gas lines. Um, sewer department, screw pump two was down. Um, thank you to, uh, that we have an engineer on the, the council, the mayor. Joe went down on Saturday and helped Stephen troubleshoot, uh, the issue, and we were able to, uh, get that fixed without having to call in an outside source, so, uh, we got that back online. Um, I think we found some other issues.
Yeah.
But, uh, those will be addressed soon. Um, let's see here. We met with Donahue and Associates this past week. Um, a couple of months ago, we talked about, um, planning, further planning for the sewer department after the initial three and a half, four million dollars that we spent down there. Uh, we'll talk about costs at a later council meeting, um, because we have to weed through all the notes and, um, different projects that are gonna need to be done, but there will need to be significant, um, developments and upgrade, additional upgrades at the sewer plant in the near future. End of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Dogger. Commissioner Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as Mayor said, Mayor, uh, Judge said earlier about the collections and donations to the fire department. Um, the fire, there's also gonna be collections for toys, new toys on, you know, that are, haven't been used. Um, that will also be collected there. It was organized by Justin Hawking from the Belmont, Belmont Fire Department, but they'll also be, um, collecting those until Sunday at, um, the Mount Carmel Fire Department, and those will go towards Mayfield, Kentucky. The fire department's been very busy with, um, public relation events in addition to the runs that they've had. Um, they participated in the Christmas uptown, the Christmas parade, and then also, um, there was an event organized this past Saturday where the light displays were available, and there were four different locations that were collecting funds for Shop With A Cop and Fireman program. And so the fire department participated in those events also. Um, they also had, uh, four other runs in addition to the public relations events. Uh, in regards to, um, the upcoming holidays, with, um, Christmas Eve being on Friday and Christmas being on Saturday, uh, we have made some adjustments so that people can still recycle their goods, and also have a brush to drop off down at the, at the transfer site. So, the, the, um, it will actually be closed on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, but it will be open on Wednesday, the twenty-second, and Thursday, the twenty-third, from seven-thirty to three-thirty, and then the same thing for the following week. We'll be closed New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, so it will be open on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, and Thursday, December thirtieth, and it will be closed on the thirty-first and the first, and then it will resume normal hours on January third. So, just kind of as a reminder, if you're doing, um, you're recycling, so if you get new things and you, all the boxes and stuff like that that you get from Christmas, um, you'll be able to take those on the twenty-ninth. Um, we'll also be doing the leaf collection. The truck is back in, in service, and it's, uh, gotten caught back up on their routes. So, if you have any questions in regards to your leaves being picked up, there is a map, and they have gotten back in, uh, service and back on schedule. End of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimmerman. All right, it's a staff report. It's Mr. Turner.
All right, I think everyone's received the twenty-twenty-two meetings and holiday form. I'll need a motion to accept those for scheduled council meetings and holidays.
A motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Rule call?
Commissioner Meeks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Uh, second item I have is, we need a motion to vacate ordinance five fifty-three. Basically, what we're doing is we're going through, trying to clean house a little bit on some of the older ordinances. This one here allows the city to sell alcoholic beverages in the community room. We no longer own that building, so it only makes sense to vacate that, so if I can get a motion to vacate that.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Okay.
Uh, rule call, Mr. Turner. Uh, real call, Mr. Turner?
Commissioner Meeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger?
Yes.
Commissioner Altmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
And finally, this is going to be considered the second reading of the tax levy. Nothing has changed since the last reading, it will be a reduction in taxes, which totals twenty-two thousand eighty-five dollars.
Are we going to make a motion now, wait till they consent?
Okay. Yeah, I have the consent, I just have to read it. Um, and with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner, Mr. Walbrook?
Uh, no reports.
Chief McWilliams?
Uh, the only thing I really have tonight is, uh, much like Commissioner Zimmerman, our department's been, um, overly busy in community-oriented events, um, to include Christmas Uptown, the parade. Um, some of our, um, employees have actually stepped up and have been ringing the bell of ILO for Operation Share. Uh, we're going to continue to do that, I think we've got a few more spots that we're going to, um, represent. Um, and then, of course, we're all, um, getting ramped up for Shop With A Cop Farm in EMS, which will be this Friday evening. I think we're meeting in the fire department at, what, five-thirty Francis?
Yes.
Um, so that's, and I think they're looking at about thirty-five or forty kids.
Awesome.
Well, not to include siblings, so it's going to be a, a big to-do, um, so we'll finally get the fruits of all our labor. Um, other than that, just, uh, standard December business, domestics and things of that nature, and we're still kind of whittling away at our, uh, drug arrests, we got another one, um, served, uh, on the sixth. Uh, the sheriff's department picked up one of our people from the, uh, ongoing drug investigation, so we're also still working along those, uh, those trails as well, and, um, that's the end of my report.
I have a question, uh, is there any status on the guy that came through from Georgia, did they ever catch him, or is he still?
Um, we, I think we have the, um, a possible identity, um, but as far as, like, we've got the, the traffic crash here, the, the brand of the crimes that occurred along that actually happened in Lawrence County, so we're focused on, I mean, the, the stuff, the items were stolen, but our primary focus is the, the vehicle collision. Um, then you've got Lawrence County, and then you've got, um, locations in Georgia where the property, the truck and the trailer, and the skid steers that were delivered prior to the accident, all these items were stolen, so, um, Detective Johnson has some leads on that, and, uh, as often is the case, it's kind of difficult when you've got multiple agencies across multiple states and various, um, sometimes a lack of interest in other jurisdictions because they have other things going on, it's, um, so we do have some information, it's just kind of a tedious process, not counting, obviously, the other things that come up along the way. So we do think we have some, uh, a lead on that, now whether that, we will have enough to, um, get that person into custody and transport it back to Wallbash County will, will remain to be seen, but we do have some leads on that.
Okay, thank you.
And unfortunately, the bigger crime was up in Lawrenceville.
Yeah, I heard about that, I just wondered if he was in jail somewhere, I mean.
Uh, he, he worked his way back to Atlanta through, uh, buses. He was able to get a ride, I think he caught a bus in, uh, Evansville and hit Nashville and then hit Atlanta. Uh, by three AM the next morning, he was back in Atlanta.
Oh, wow.
So he made some quick time, um, by the time we, we figured out who he was, and there was a lot of labor put into trying to even come up with that information, because we're kind of at the mercy of all these, uh, private entities and what information they'll provide us, so, um, so I think, uh, there's potential there that we can get something done, but I don't, I can't speak for the other jurisdictions, obviously.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief, Chief Smith?
Go ahead, I really have is, uh, it's Christmas time, and for those that has a real tree, please keep them watered, because of the lights and stuff on them. Uh, it's winter time, and if you do have a space heater, make sure you keep at least three feet of clearance away from the heater, and if you are having issues with the heater, please do not try to fix it or, and try to use it and cause another issue, so, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, Chief Smith, thank you very much, Mr. Gidcombe?
I know that each one of the commissioners reports on their different areas, but I just wanted to say that these different groups have been working so well together, for instance, the street department groups have been working with water sewer maintenance, sewer department. Anytime an area needs help, these, these men and women have been getting together and getting the jobs done with the, the lower amount of employees that we have, and I just wanted to say they, they've done a really, really good job this year just meshing together and working together.
I agree.
Yeah, it's, it's worked very well.
End of my report. Okay, yeah, I've been getting a lot of compliments, um, on how the employees have been working together and the amount of, uh, jobs that the city is taking on now versus going out for contracts, so. And then, it's, it's been good, so.
I do have one question for Chief Smith, did you ever apply for that grant, firefight, AFT grant for?
It's not due until Friday.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Any other questions?
No.
For sure?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all right, consent agenda, does anybody have any questions about consent agenda? Hearing none, I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Real call, Mr. Turner?
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Altmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Do we have anything else to discuss this evening?
I don't think so.
All right, uh, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second. Oh. Gosh, I thought you guys wanted to stay here all night.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, everybody have a Merry Christmas.
I was just.